Good evening, I'd like to open the Deerfield Planning Board meeting on April 2nd, 2018, at 7 o'clock here at the Deerfield Town Hall. Tonight's agenda is to review minutes of previous meeting, review some mail, and we have some new business. We have A and Rs on Wells Cross Road regarding Savage's Farms. Then we have some requests for comments regarding special permit at 67 Stillwater Road, variants at 39 Thayer Street, and another variance at 37 South Main Street. Those are just requests for comments from the planning board. Then we want to spend some time reviewing proposed changes in zoning bylaws that have been submitted by the building inspector. Then old business is to have a final draft of zoning bylaws for cultivation and processing, product manufacturing, and retail sale of marijuana in Deerfield, and prepare for the town meeting. And then any other business not reasonably anticipated, 48 hours prior to the posting of the meeting, we'll set a date for the next meeting and we'll adjourn. Any comments or changes to the agenda? Good, and we have some minutes from the March 26th meeting if we can review that and vote on it.
There's a couple of things on this. Mark Malone said that he felt that the town could be in a million dollar range for production and retail. Once he found out that the production could not be taxed, he went, "Oh, really? So that should either be struck or something should be added to it." And when John Baronis asked, "Can anyone buy marijuana anywhere in Massachusetts?" That wasn't the question that I asked. I asked if an out-of-stater could buy marijuana in Massachusetts.
Okay, yeah, you're right, yep. Which page was that on, John?
Talk about the second page.
Asked what?
Can out-of-state? Can anyone out-of-state?
And there were comments by Kalashowski. And that was part of, he had two recommendations, and one of them was that we revisit the five-acre minimum. I like that reflected in the minutes as well.
Yeah, and there's...
He had two comments, I can't remember the other one.
There was, sorry, there was two comments from people in the audience that I would consider against marijuana, and those aren't shown in here, so any of the...
Which two were they, John?
The woman that lived on, somewhere over on...
Carol Craft?
Stillwater Road.
No. Carol Craft, I think he mentions her, but Anna Lee on Graves...
Right.
Not Graves Street, Mountain Road.
Mountain Road, yeah.
Yeah, she's there.
Oh, she's there, I didn't see that.
So again, let's just be clear that these minutes don't have to have any of these kind of notes in it?
No, they don't have to, that's why I'm saying they...
The main thing is the motion's correct.
They should be...
Well, the motions are a little awkward, because I thought that it was, I thought we made a motion to forward... Not if, well, I mean, I don't know if that's a five-acre minimum, I guess required minimum. I don't know if that makes sense.
Just a minute, Rachel, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but John, if you were talking about Anna Lee Wolfke, she's on the backside, she's there.
Like John said, these don't necessarily have to be in there, they should probably be struck.
But I've changed yours to say out-of, to add out-of-state in it? The answer was yes anyways, right?
Yes, that is correct.
And you're taking away the comment from Mark Malone since it's not...
You want to take that out, sure?
Just take it out, it's not relevant.
Quite right.
Okay. I'm not sure it's right.
The Lily White comment, do we know that number's correct, 960 million?
No, it's just that she said that that's what she found online, so it's her, it's her what she said, you know what I'm saying?
And her name is Dwight.
You got that, Paul, her name is Dwight?
Her name is Dwight?
Dwight.
Okay. See, people say the things out there and you never get to look at it. Dwight. Okay, it's there twice.
Please, Paul, we'll help you fix it now.
What's that?
I said, "That's why we'll..."
There you go, there you go.
Teamwork.
Now, where does she have the second mention?
The third bullet and then the seventh bullet or something. Can we just, can we go to the motion there, because these are the most important things.
Well, the motions, I just had to do the best I could with them. Pat was going to review them and didn't get a chance yet. So I'm willing to change it. What did you want to change?
No, I'm asking, is this...
Well, I guess, I just, I think it was, it was my motion to review, we had reviewed the five-acre minimum for...
Are you talking, which of the four motions are you talking about?
The very first one, basically.
The first one in the list there was done before we did any of the other motions, although there's one missing. Okay, yep. There is one missing there, because we had five motions.
No, there were four.
No, we made one, we made one change to add the five acres. And then we went and did one to forward to the Board of Selectmen, one to the town meeting, and then another one for the Board of Selectmen and the one under their prohibition.
Right, recommend.
So, yeah, so there's one missing here.
I think, Paul, just to clarify what Rachel, what I'm hearing her say, that first motion? Instead of five-acre requirement, she's talking, it was a five-acre minimum, was it?
Yes.
Minimum requirement.
So change the word requirement to minimum.
Yeah. Just so you understand, John, prior to this motion, there was another one made that Rachel made to increase it to a five-acre minimum.
Or to add.
Yes.
To add a five-a...
I thought that's what that says.
Well, now, this was just in there too.
With the five acre.
Yeah, that was the second motion.
See, we had a motion to turn it, to give it to the Selectmen. We had a motion to recommend it to the annual town meeting on the first two. And then the second two were the prohibition ones. So I will write that other one up here. It's in my minutes, but I skipped over it for some reason.
And I apologize, Paul, that we had planned to talk and haven't had a chance.
Okay.
The time went by so quickly from last Monday to this.
Yeah. Seems like it was just last week we met.
Funny thing. So you are correct, there was first the vote on adding the five-acre minimum.
That's not in here, that's got to be added.
Which you do not have in here now, and I have that as Rachel making the motion.
And I seconded it.
You seconded it, and it was four to, four to zero.
Four to zero, yep.
And then I have, and then I agree with your votes, as you have put them in the minutes here in regard to forwarding both of these and then what your recommendation would be to the town meeting. I have a little bit different notes on who, sometimes who made and who seconded, so...
Okay, I had, let's see, I had Rachel and Kip to recommend to the town meeting.
I had on that very first one...
And Rachel and Paul to go to the Selectmen.
So the very first one you have listed here, which is to send it to the Board of Selectmen, the Marijuana Facilities and Operations Draft?
Yep.
That one, I had John Baronis making that motion.
Well, for some reason, I had John Baronis and...
Maybe it might have gotten switched, because there was a lot of discussion back and forth.
Yeah, I had John Baronis and Kip Camosa crossed out, and then Rachel and Paul put in, for some reason.
I mean, we have a... All right.
I don't remember why.
I have Rachel and Paul on the second one. And yours is Rachel and Kip. So we can resolve this by looking back at the video to make sure, to make sure that we have it correct.
All right.
You know, unless one of you has a recollection of whether you moved one of those or seconded it, and it's not shown. We can double-check that video, that's the best way, because it is important to get this correct.
This meeting is on today, so...
Right, that's what I was just saying, we'll look at that video and we can make a final determination, so it's correct. No, they definitely were recording last week, so I think we can double-check that easily.
They were here, but they didn't actually patch it.
Oh, well, we'll double-check, we'll make sure. That was Wendy Foxman speaking in from the sidelines there, helping us make that determination in case people at home couldn't hear or see.
Do you have another set of these minutes, John? Because I'm going to send one to Priscilla, and I'll mark one up myself. I think I gave you all the minutes.
Yeah, I did.
Okay, thank you.
I can take a look at that.
Do you think we should table these minutes and revisit them next month? I'd like to make a motion that we table these minutes.
You want to do that?
And move it to next...
That's fine.
No, because these are like going on the annual, going on the annual warrant and town meeting and stuff, so we really need to have them proper.
Is she reviewing who said what then, on the tape right now as far as vote?
I don't think she has the time to do that. Now, I do have a, I do have a planning board report for you. The vote tallies, the totals, we all agree on, and that's all that is on those planning board reports. So you could vote those and still hold this to make sure you have it right about who made the motions and who seconded them.
That's fine, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, let's do that then.
Okay, let me just, just so that we're clear on this, the changes, and make sure that I've got everything here. What I have here is that I took John Waite's name off of the present. I took out Mark Malone, I changed Lily White to Lily Dwight in both places. I took out the Mark Malone statement on the first side. Second side, I added to John Baronis's, "Can anyone out-of-state buy marijuana in Massachusetts?" And the answer, of course, was yes. And then on the, on the first motion there, there should have been one before that where Rachel moved and Paul seconded a motion to add a five-acre requirement in the RA zone.
Minimum.
Does that, does that make sense?
Minimum, I don't know why I'm stuck on that.
But was it, was it for all zones or just RA? That was the thing I had a question on.
And the RA, special permitting.
Okay, because I had written in my notes, an RA zone.
Yep.
And that was a vote of four to zero.
Correct.
Okay, and then Rachel, you want to change the requirement to minimum?
Just the word, yeah.
Just the word.
Change requirement to minimum in both cases?
Yes.
The one that's not here and the one that is.
There's actually two here already, so you're changing these two and then in the original vote.
Where did you see two here in the minutes?
Both the one that forwards the zoning amendment to the Board of Selectmen and the one that gives the planning board recommendations, so the second one in there.
Okay, yep, gotcha, okay.
And I also noted, Paul, the last bullet was Steve Pistrich's comment. Adam Costa's name is spelled incorrectly, it's missing the final A on Costa.
There's a few misspellings I can also just send along.
Yeah, cannabis.
Needing it up, cannabis prohibition.
Oh, yeah, no, A, A's missing at the end of it.
John.
Yeah, there's a John.
And where's the John?
The very final, John Baronis moved and Max seconded.
Join, okay. And we all agree that the votes are the way they should be, never mind who voted what or who...
Yes.
Okay, so we all agree on that, so...
Right.
I'd like to make a...
Ken, what, just to be clear, who, Paul, you were the acting chair?
I was for the beginning of the meeting, and then Kip took over when he came in.
For some reason, Adam thinks that was important, so that should be clarified.
All right, so...
And then if you put, I think right, right after old business, you opened the public hearing. It should be clear when you opened it and that you opened it and that you closed it. Does that...
Well, that's what I was, I was trying to figure that out here.
So did you open it or did...
I did open it.
He opened it and I closed the public hearing.
I opened it at 6:12, which I believe...
Well, you opened the meeting and then you reviewed minutes, but then you should have opened the public hearing.
No, 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 the review of minutes happened later on, we did not do that initially.
He opened the public hearing pretty much first.
Right away.
Okay.
And so I didn't, I didn't move the review of minutes to when it actually happened. It happened at the end of the meeting, not at the beginning.
All right, so that should be changed then.
You want to do that? Because lots, in other times, we've just left it there and come back to it. But that's okay, if you want to put that at the end, I'll...
Well, I'm just, I just want to be very clear that you officially opened the meeting and you read the public hearing notice, that should be in the minutes, that you opened it.
That's right there, Paul opened the meeting and read the agenda aloud.
But I'm saying you should say, "Open the public hearing."
Oh, you want to...
That's different than a planning board meeting.
Okay, okay, public hearing, I'll change that.
Because that's...
Because that's all we did, basically, is do the open hearing.
And according to my notes, Paul, you opened it at 6:15 PM.
I had 6:12, but if you want to...
Close enough for governmental work on that one?
Yep, okay.
And then Kip had closed it at 6:40, oh, 40, no, I'm sorry.
At what time?
He closed it at 7:46.
7:46 is what you've got there, that's perfect.
Seven forty-six. Oh, yeah, I've got that there, never mind. That was the ending. Seven forty-six is what I have in the minutes.
That's right.
And then you guys did the votes after you closed the public hearing, just like you're supposed to, so well-run.
Yep.
Man, congratulations.
Paul and Kip took care of that.
Nice job.
They both did a nice job of handling the meeting in your absence.
So Kip came in during the, you want me to put in, Kip came in at a certain time here?
6:20 PM, I know.
Yeah, if he took over his chair, you need to write it.
Okay, so where would you want to put that in here? I think we, I think we're...
I was here for all of these conversations anyway.
I think after Adam Costa had started his...
No, why don't you just say, you opened it, and then Kip Camosa arrived shortly thereafter and took over chairing the meeting.
Came, and you said at 6:20 you had?
Yes.
In at 6:20.
And typically, you would also note members absent.
Right, so move me down to absent.
So you would note that the chair was absent.
Yeah, absent, John.
With, you know, that he had notified the board that he was going to be absent.
Okay. Rather than writing this up for Priscilla, I will take them and redo them and add, make those changes and send her a clean copy of it.
Nice. Thank you. All right, so we have, do we vote on this?
No, I was going to make a motion and then we can discuss, but I guess, I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from March 26th with, there's really no others other than saying all of the changes. We do all agree that the votes may have been facilitated by somebody other than who it says, and that'll be fixed, but the actual votes themselves are correct.
I believe so, yes. It's the motion second?
Second.
Rachel, okay.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Actually, me, I abstain. All right, let's move the review mail to later and go into new business. We have A and Rs, apparently a couple of them on regarding Wells Cross Road and Savage Farm. And I did not find anything in our file, and I asked the applicants, and they actually have the applications with them, with the maps and stuff. So if you want to come up to the table and, do you have a couple you can give to us and then you can explain it to us?
Yes, one, I have two A and Rs. One is on Wells Cross Road and one is on Lower Road.
On what road?
Lower Road.
Lower Road?
Yeah. And I will give you the Lower Road one first, because that's going to be the most straightforward.
So easy.
So do we, did it just get, did it just get left out of the agenda, the Lower Road one? Or are they related and something got together?
As I said, Paul, we, I have, we do not have anything in the files yet, so this was brought to Priscilla's attention during the week and she put it on the agenda.
And I think she misunderstood. We have two A and R plans, one on Wells Cross, one on Lower. She assumed, I guess, that there was two on Wells Cross.
Okay, all right.
So I'm not familiar with how you guys deal with this stuff, so if you help me along here...
If we can get a couple of them, we can be looking at it while you explain it to us.
And I know your name, but is...
My name is Randy Izer.
Randy Izer, okay.
I C E R, and I'm from Harold Eaton Associates.
R I Z.
Yes.
E R.
Here, John.
I'm just I Z E R.
I Z E.
So the application says to divide off the northerly, northerly 8.4 acres of existing parcel. Both lots have adequate frontage and area to satisfy current zoning bylaws. So this is to take one existing lot and make it into two.
Correct. Here, Jay said, he's looking out of the audience. This property is, belongs to his mother. She's dividing this, what I'm calling Lot Two, off, and he's going to acquire it from her. The Lot Two has enough frontage and enough area to satisfy your zoning. Her remaining land has enough frontage and area to satisfy your zoning.
So her lot is...
So where's the existing lot?
Nine.
All right, so the existing lot is all this.
The whole thing.
Without this piece in the middle.
Yeah, this one came out a couple of years ago through A and R process. So she had what's left. And what I have highlighted in bold is what's being transferred out, and then what's white is what's ripped.
Okay, so this is, so this lot right here is referred to as Lot Two?
This one right here, stopping here.
But what was this original lot called?
Well, it was, so it's Assessor's Map 71, Parcel Two.
Okay. And now it's going to be one and two?
Lot one, and I don't, I don't call this anything, it's called remaining land.
Okay, so you're removing Lot Two from this, okay. Let me see if I can write that down.
This is already, this is already there.
Correct.
So then, Randy, this line here is being added, this is really where the...
The date is going to be, yes.
Okay, so Assessor's map.
Well, it looks pretty straightforward.
Seventy-one parcel two.
So the remaining has frontage of 296.
Yeah, plus, 296 is from there to there.
Oh, plus you got a little more than that. And then the new lot has 133 plus 153?
Correct.
287.
So it looks like that Lot Two is going to be called Parcel Nine now. Is that right? Is that what you're saying?
No, because down here it says Parcel Nine too, it's just...
It's just part of the, that's the original.
So you said this was the original, Seventy-one parcel two, which was this whole thing, right?
Which includes this too, this must...
No, I'm saying, it looks like this name he said is this whole, this whole thing.
It's all in, it's all in Karen Savage's name.
Oh, yeah, okay. There's just a difference, yeah? Okay, so maybe we should reference book and page rather than...
Yeah, I think...
Yeah, because it does say two and nine here.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we endorse...
The plan. Book sixteen sixty-six, oh, the devil you say.
Any angles, I don't know.
Two ninety-nine. Seconded. Okay, whoops, wait a minute, I'll say, John Baronis, with an H not a Y, and seconded by Max.
Now, before, yeah, you're voting to...
Well, no, I gotta do some discussion here about this.
Okay, I was going to say, before you make up your mind, because we didn't go through the process correctly and that we didn't file this with the town clerk, I would suggest, if the board agrees, to sign the plans and have the town clerk hold them hostage, if you will, until Mr. Savage pays his fee and does whatever he's supposed to do.
So I think we can put that as a condition on the, because all, yeah, nothing's been filed in the page, so...
Right. So in the future, shouldn't we take care of that first before we even review the plans?
Yes, and I explained that to the applicants, and they maybe didn't get the right story, so whether we want to...
As long as everybody's okay with that.
Again, it's not the way we want to do things, but...
It's expedient, we're not going to see each other.
Signatures aren't valid until it...
Actually, we won't give them back any forms. Actually, do you have the MyLars?
Yes, it's in, it's in the...
It's right here.
All right, so we're not going to give them anything until...
Yeah, don't give it, if there's anything that's signed back, just give it to the town clerk and then she will come and take care of her business and then...
That's right.
I think that protects everybody.
Swap, swap.
And there is a page two of the application.
So that's just a checklist, is it not?
Yeah, there's some other information on there, including, no, I thought signatures too.
Now, just for, just for technicality purposes, how much is the fee supposed to be?
Actually, a hundred and fifty, because it's a hundred for the application and then fifty per lot, so they're creating one extra lot, so a hundred and fifty.
Write that on the form, maybe, just so there's no question, please?
So, that was questioned, because sometimes it's fifty, it's, it's two lots being created.
Well, no, we've had this discussion.
That's why, that's why I was asking the question.
New lots.
Only new lots, okay.
Fifty dollars per new lot. So we had the motion with the condition that the plans not be released until these are...
Yeah, I'll redo the motion. So I'd like to make a motion that we endorse the plans. However, applicant does not get assigned copies until things have been legalized through the town hall.
Okay, picked up, picked up that the plans can be picked up when payment is made at...
When application and proper payments are made.
Yeah, okay, to the town clerk, right, town clerk.
You still second that, Max? Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Six zero one.
Actually, page two has a place that I signed, that it's been endorsed there. So I don't have page two there.
Okay.
Okay, then there you go, there's a little bit more.
So, but we can sign these.
And I don't know how many copies you guys need to sign.
We need, we need three and then the MyLars, yeah.
Well, I want to make sure I sign on the same line, I hate signing on different lines, so, when everybody else is going on.
Oh, my.
Yeah, I'll just do these right on the, if I can just... And we're not even doing Sharpies anymore on these things, depends, depends what... Pass on this way and then we'll come back your way.
The registry doesn't keep the MyLars anymore like they used to.
No.
They just scan them and give, at least Greenfield, they scan it and give it right back to me. They used to keep them in their files forever, that's why they had to be with a Sharpie and on the MyLar, blah, 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 so...
So do they even have hard copies anymore?
I'm sure they have hard copies of the old stuff, but any of the new stuff, they don't.
But not the new stuff, that's insane.
Yeah, it is.
All right, you want to try your next one? You were successful on that, so let's keep going.
Okay. This one is similar in our disregard for following rules.
No, following, rules, yes, protocol.
Okay. So this one is on Wells Cross Road. There are two different properties on Wells Cross Road. One that is currently owned, and one that is in the cross... One that Mr. Savage currently owns, and one that he's in the process of buying.
They might want.
And rather than make two different plans, I made one plan with everything on it. That's why you have two Form As, because there's two different ownerships. Uh, the property that Mr. Savage owned, he was able to sign the Form A. The other property is, is that the Gripen Estate?
Yes, Helen Gripen.
The owners are all over the country, as I understand it, and it's been difficult to try to get ahold of them, so we're gonna have to figure out something to do with that.
Alright, so this is the one that doesn't have an address, right? Wells Cross Road, no number?
There's one that's got no number, because that's just farmland currently. And then there's the one that's for Wells Cross Road, the house and the corn.
So Randy, what about the legal signatures for the property that Savage Farms is trying to buy? The Gripen.
Try to get that work, and it may happen that he ends up buying it before we can get ahold of the, um, current owners. And I'm not, I don't know what the boards, what your rules are all about in terms of making sure that the owner signs. Not every planning board does that. Just because we, I bring a plan to you, and make all these new lines, and you were to sign it, nothing legal can happen with a transfer unless the owner does that.
Yeah, I mean, personally, I'd, I'd be nervous about signing something without the owner's signature.
Well, again, we're on two, we're on two separate papers, we're going to have to go with it. If we're, the local board needs to go until you have the proper paperwork.
Next, do you wanna sign these together or no signature?
If I could just interrupt on that. Um, the house, Helen's house, which is Four Wells Cross Road, what's that?
That's Stucco One.
The Stucco One, yeah. Yeah, right across. Um, I was supposed to close on that over a month ago, um, when I purchased the farmland. But we found an issue with underground oil tank, and I put the whole thing on hold, they had, in the prop, in the meantime, have fixed the oil tank issue. Um, and so we're literally days away from, from the closing. So if, just to give you a little heads up on, on where we're at with that, so.
I mean, you, you can buy it and close, it doesn't matter when we do this.
Right, right.
Obviously, you wanna be able to do this.
Obviously, I'd like to just get this done this evening, we're here, we have the paperwork.
But it's not gonna hold up any closings, is what I'm.
Right.
So, um, alright, let's, let's do this fir, one first, the one that he, that Jay does own.
Okay.
That we've got the right signature on, what's that one?
On the south side of Wells Cross Road, as you're looking at it, will be on your left, which is Lot C and Lot D.
Five and Ten, yeah, well, it's cross, right, alright. Chapelys is here, alright.
So.
Rachel, is there a revan for these, Amy?
Uh, I've got them.
Okay. We didn't keep any copies out of there, so we gotta.
Oh, we're gonna hold on to them.
We're gonna hold on to them.
So anyhow, Lot C is going to be conveyed to Chapley, who owns the lot on Five and Ten. So they're gonna buy this Lot C, which is four point three zero eight acres, a barn and a garage on it. Mr. Savage is going to keep Lot D for himself. This is, uh, raised, this land is higher than this land, so this is an overgrown pasture kind of situation, and this is currently used as farmland. So, Mr. Savage does not have any use for this, apparently the Chapleys do, so they're going to buy that from him, and he's gonna keep Lot D.
Okay, just for my own purposes, so this, this sale has already taken place.
He owns this.
So Jay owns this, and this is the one he's hoping to close on in the next few days.
So the line for this one is this line?
That is right.
You're trying to make this, alright.
Is that in these direct, is that in the?
So divide existing lot, uh, eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven?
Parcel One, yeah. Divide that into two parcels. One will be transferred to a butter, has nothing to do with us, and the other two be, he just wants to divide it, that's all we care about.
Correct.
We don't care.
And what's the page in the lot, I mean, the book and page?
So it's, uh, no, see, also.
Lot Twelve.
Well.
So this is what you want, seventy-one fifty.
Is the book?
Yeah.
And the page?
One fifty-three.
One fifty-three, and so you're dividing that into two lots, and you're calling them C and D?
Correct.
Okay.
Randy, this parcel here, so was this all, here is, is the, is this all one parcel right now from here, or is this separate from this?
Yes, no, that's correct.
We haven't got that, John, we haven't got that, we're still voting on this one. We're, we're doing two votes, these are two different.
We're doing two votes.
These are two different A and Rs, yeah. It's just, he's just using one map, is what he said, to save.
So do we have two signature lines, then?
I know, it is.
We should have two signature lines.
I've never done that before, we have.
Shouldn't matter, you're, you're signing for everything that's shown on the plan. The, you have, I have two Form As, just because I have different.
Two separate votes should be two separate signature lines, I'm not.
I know.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not going along with that one.
But if we approve them both, then, doesn't matter.
Yeah, there are enough copies there.
I mean, we have two different applications. So, um.
Now, can I, just.
So there's gonna be a hundred dollars plus fifty dollars here, and then another hundred dollars and another fifty dollars here, because they're two different applications, but.
Well, this'll actually be two hundred.
Well, yeah, I don't know.
Just take two separate votes, like.
Yeah.
On, you know, B and the Chapley one, and just make it very clear that we approve both of those, and just sign the one.
Vote A.
I'd like to just look at, so I can write down better what.
If we don't, if we don't approve one, then we're a lot of trouble.
Yeah, then there'd be an issue.
Well, I would do vote A and B then, and then just put a B next and put two signatures on it, I'd.
You could do that, too.
I just think they both require separate signatures.
Just, just so I understand here, this, this line, there's two lines here?
No, sorry, sorry, we're up on this one, Paul.
We're doing this, okay, alright.
So that diagonal line is.
Yeah, well, yeah, um, I'd like to make a motion that we endorse the Lot D and C portion of this A and R as, um, I, I, as an endorsement.
And we, we did look at the, the frontage is over, it's several hundred, where, I'm trying to.
Three hundred plus one sixty, so we're, we're seventy-five-ish there on that one.
I'm not seeing, there's one sixty-four, what's the other number? We got it upside down.
Well, because of the barn.
Oh, okay. And then over here is, uh, seven sixty-three. And the acres, alright. Alright, do we have a mo, a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of endorsing this one?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained. I'm abstaining, because I've done business with Jade.
Okay.
Okay, so that's, that's the first step.
And that is, again, um, application in one lot, so a hundred dollars plus fifty dollars, so it's a hundred fifty, a hundred fifty.
Parcel R.
Alright, and so the other one now is down here, so this is, uh.
So that was vote A, right, John?
Yeah.
So, you want me to make that somewhere here, uh, that vote A?
Yes, it should be in the mats.
Okay. I'm sorry.
So now you wanna, you're taking, uh, Map Eighty-Six.
Let's see. So book, book number what now for this next one?
So this is Map Eighty-Six, it's, um, book.
There's two deeds, two deeds on this one.
So, so are you combining two lots, is that?
No, no, there's two different ownerships, this is in a, it was in an estate, so somebody got part of it years back, and then somebody got the remainder of it a few years ago. So there's four different owners via two deeds on this. So if it's easier for you, you can do the, the zoning, the Assessor's Map and Parcel, because it's just one lot, and it, it all makes sense on this one.
Right, A, B, and Parcel R.
So there's no book and page on this, is that what you're saying?
It's right here. So there's that one, and then this one, so there's, that's one deed, and that's the second.
And so what's, okay, so I, I missed what this is trying to, what you're trying to accomplish here.
Okay, we haven't gotten there yet.
Okay, that's why I missed it, okay, right.
So, on the north side of Wells Cross Road is the existing house and a barn. We are cutting that out, I'm calling that Lot B. It has more than two hundred feet of frontage, it has more than sixty thousand square feet. The side yard setback from the barn to the new property line is more, I think you gotta have fifteen feet.
Twenty down here and thirty-two up there.
At the, at a minimum. So there's no zoning, uh, setback violations. Then Lot A is an empty lot, it has two hundred feet of frontage, it has seventy-seven thousand eight hundred and forty-six square feet. At no point is the lot less than a hundred feet wide. Uh, it, it wraps around onto Wells Cross Road, I don't know what the, this town's policy is on accessing something over some, uh, the part of the lot that's not your legal frontage. Uh, but if that's allowable, more than likely, whoever buys this will want to access off of Wells Cross Road rather than out on the busy Greenfield Road.
But the frontage.
Is on Greenfield.
Is on Greenfield Road.
We're talking Lot A.
Lot A we're looking at now, yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't know what, what the zone says about accessing.
It's not anything, but.
I'm not sure they care, are they?
That will come up, uh, really for me.
Right, right.
So you're taking two, two parcels and creating two new parcels from each?
Two parcel, with two different deeds of ownership, I know that's can get confusing, but it is just one existing parcel. And in addition to the Lot A, I have something that I'm calling Parcel R, which is a twenty-foot wide strip that's going to be conveyed to, what is this guy, Molinar?
Oh, over here.
Yeah, is that how he?
This one.
Yeah, not to, not to this.
No, not to this, it's to this one, so he can access his farmland off of Wells Cross Road. And rather than give a right of way, we are creating a separate parcel, I have a note on that parcel that says it is not a separate building lot, just so.
And that's twenty feet wide?
Yeah.
Wow. So is that, what does that say, so you're creating a non-conforming?
By, by my telling you that it's not a building lot, then you, as, I, I've never had a board not sign something like that.
Yeah, it's not up to us to endorse it whether or not it's a building lot, it's just for us to endorse, whether it's a subdivision or not, is really what.
But can it even be a, any kind of lot?
Well, it's not really a lot, that's why, in, in a situation like this, you'll notice that the stuff that's, I have, that's buildable, I call it a lot, this one I'm calling a parcel. And then also telling you that it's not a building lot, so that there is no confusion.
Well, actually, good, yeah, I guess you're right, because if, if you just did that, and then you convey it to this person, it makes sense. You convey it to this person, we don't, we don't decide who you convey it to, so, okay.
You could divide a piece of property into one foot by one foot square if you wanted to.
Can you underarm, we don't have anything?
Just in case I have problems wrecking this up later.
No, it's, uh, when it comes to the divisionary property, you can do whatever you want, it's whether or not it's buildable, considered a building lot.
So rear and side yard setbacks are ten feet, so this is twenty, so you're, yeah, alright.
I just wanted more room in case some, somebody that is possibly have farm equipment doing that barn, there's enough room to get.
Yeah, those are pre-existing zoning anyways, John, they could've inevitably run that line right up next to the barn, so.
Well, no, he's creating, this is a new line he's creating.
You can't? I thought pre-existing zoning was stay logged.
No, he's, he's creating a new line, John.
Because it's new.
Yeah.
Once I start changing boundary lines, then I have to comply.
Yeah.
With current zoning as best I can.
Yeah, absolutely.
If I have a lot where your, your frontage is two hundred feet, and there's only a hundred and fifty feet, I obviously can't make it bigger.
If you were separating these two, between here and here, I think that's when that would've taken.
Then that's a whole different ballgame.
Whatever, yeah, it's, uh.
Can I just ask, Pat, do you hear anything that we should be asking questions about here?
Hi.
Don't influence our.
There's a lot of questions that have been raised, first of all, there was a, an issue as to your frontage definition, and that's on page one seventy-nine eighty-two of the bylaws, and that reads, "The frontage shall mean the boundary of a lot coinciding with the street line, being an unbroken distance along the way currently maintained by the town, county, or state, or along ways shown on the definitive plans of approved subdivisions, through which," and this is the important part, "actual access to the potential building site shall be required." So your, so your access is, must go over that frontage according to their definition. So as long as that can, it sound like you had enough.
But again, we're not calling this a building lot or not, and we're not giving a building permit.
You don't, you, in no case do you ever call them a building lot or not, you stamp every plan saying that you're not voting, you're not commenting in any way as to it's, uh, whether it's a buildable or not.
So we, all we know is that they do have frontage on here of two hundred.
As long as they have the sufficient frontage, that's really all you need to look at? So that makes that twenty-foot wide strip a little bit problematic, because it doesn't have the frontage, and, and since they, they don't distinguish in endorsing between buildable lots and non-buildable lots, that is not their determination. That one's a little, that one's a little bit more problematic. If, if the intent is to sell it to that a butter, why not create an A and R, redrawing that line so that that is actually then assigned to that a butter? So then you're redrawing the lines of that, so you're sort of moving that, at no point are you creating that twenty-foot wide strip as a separate lot, you're creating a new lot that would incorporate it for that a butter.
Well, it's still a part of this property, so I understand what you're saying, but the, the real issue with that is.
Yeah, you have to.
If I, let's say that neighbor's property is two hundred acres, and now you're gonna tell me I've got to survey two hundred acres to add this twenty-foot strip to it, and I don't think that's fair and reasonable. And again, I do have a note on here that it's to be conveyed to the a butter, and I do have a note on there that it is not a buildable lot. And I, I, um, any client of mine is entitled to create a non-conforming lot if they so choose. They have to deal with the consequences, because a planning board signs this, it doesn't mean, as you said, that it is a legal building lot. I also have a note on all my plans that say planning board endorsement, and I indicate that this plan meets all zoning requirements, but I don't believe that I'm creating something that doesn't meet zoning requirements because I'm not trying to create a building lot. I'm trying to, I'm just cutting a parcel, it's no different, as, as the chairman said, if, if I wanted to sell that to this neighbor, that neighbor, or whatever. We are, we are entitled to do that.
But Mr. Chairman, it is, and it, it sounds like I haven't seen the plans, but it sounds like from what you're describing, that it is now being carved out as a separate lot.
It's a creation of a.
And absent the frontage, you're not supposed to endorse a separate lot.
It has frontage, but not enough to become a, and not enough square footage to become a building lot.
When you, when you endorse an A and R plan, in essence, you know, with all the case law and everything, what you are saying is that it has the required frontage. And that one doesn't, so that was what makes a problem.
And it's accessible.
So there actually should be another vote for that.
Access over that, yes.
Has to be accessible as well.
Reasonable access over that frontage.
It can't be at the top of a cliff, in other words.
Right, right.
Yeah.
But it seems like so, sometimes we've, we've created a landlocked lot sometimes, I think.
Sometimes there are outlots of that nature.
And then they might sell it to a neighbor who then ends up being able to get to it. So that's kind of what this is, it's almost a.
So, so what I'm, if, tell me if what I'm hearing is correct, you're basically saying you can't sell anything less than a building lot?
No, no. That's.
Because you can't establish it as a separate law done in A and R, you could sell that piece to him, and then, and I would assume there's already an existing survey that you could just attach that piece to if that were to go through?
No, he cannot sell that without a plan.
Make it, make it into different.
Because it has to be recordable before somebody will write D. If you're changing boundary lines in any way, shape, or form, whether it's ten miles or ten inches, this board, or A board, has to sign it, and so.
Did you, did you see it, does that help feel? Not that it helps, but I.
Randy, I got a question, and I'll call it Helen Gripen's and Carlo Allen's, where is the existing line?
Between them?
Now.
Right here.
Because it's, it's dark, so it almost looks like you're creating that line, but that already exists.
This line exists.
You're creating this line right here. You're creating this line right here.
You wanna move it over the twin feet.
That's what I thought.
It's a found iron pin.
Access, so, Spaniard Gardens can access Carl's land in the back.
I think if we do a third vote for Parcel R, I think that covers us. So, you know what I mean? So, Parcel A and B are one vote, and then Parcel R is another vote, because it's entirely different, different, uh-
Can I just throw, but this still isn't your, I don't, this still isn't property, I mean, the property owners are still-
Right, we can't do anything until we get-
He's almost like creating three on this map, actually, because it's-
Right.
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
Two new ones from, this is all one, and then he's gonna create this and then-
Can you show me the lines here again?
Sure.
What?
This is the existing-
Oh, I know this, I know this line here.
So, he's creating this line here.
Is this coming out of this property?
Yes.
It all is. And none of this property's involved, right?
Correct.
That's their, that's their original line.
That's the original.
Right.
And all they're doing is making, he's buying a strip of land for it.
So, you've got three, you've got two, one, two, three.
That's a, that's a plan.
Oh, that's a plan? Okay, that's why, okay, that's what I was trying, so, so it's just these two book and page that have to be dealt with, okay?
And again, it's two, two deeds, one parcel. You, what happens sometimes is somebody will sell their kids fifty percent interest today, and then next week they sell the other kids the other fifty percent. So, I have to show two deeds because there are two different-
All right, that's what I was trying to figure out, okay. So, there's two, this, the, the original lot consists of two different deeds. Twenty, twenty-six, thirty-four, twenty-six, thirty-four, page eighty-nine, no, one forty-nine.
So, what's gonna happen with that twenty-foot strip is it's going to become part of the abutter's property.
Right.
And that, that happens all the time as well without surveying everything.
Well, no, because all you gotta do is find these two points and take that line out, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Take that little line out. So, so read us again the, the things that we review.
The frontage, so when you're, when you're signing an A and R, you're looking at whether it has sufficient frontage and whether it has adequate access across that frontage. So, as Paul pointed out, you know, it can't be a divided highway, you know, so that you can't get in. It can't be a cliff, so it's impossible to get across. It can't be a raging river.
But when we-
And we're the only state in the Union that has A and Rs.
Right, but also when you say create sufficient frontage, frontage for what?
Access.
We're not looking for a building lot.
You are, you, you do not have the final say on whether they're building lots or not. All the law, all the A and R forms always have that stamp on it saying that you are simply voting as to whether it has that, that frontage in.
But the frontage being two hundred feet?
Two hundred feet in this case. This is an RR, right?
I believe that the, the land that that is abutting to is already APR'd, so.
And that has, that has sufficient frontage. That's why you're saying if they brought this at the same time and showed sufficient frontage and they're gonna add this on.
Yes.
See, that's the difference. But if it's already, it's already A and R, so-
But it's, it's already APR'd. There's never gonna be any building there. You can't build on the lot I'm trying to sell.
No, 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 we're not talking about building lots. We're not talking about buildings.
That's not relevant to the fire.
It's not relevant.
I, I, I understand what you're saying, but I respectfully disagree with you.
And I am not the final authority on this. I think, you know, it, this is one of the ones that's sufficiently complicated, you know, that it might be worth a quick question to counsel to advise the board. And since you don't have the signatures anyway and are gonna be holding it, that might give you some time on that.
Like, like you say, this, this down here is not a problem.
Right.
But this is still-
And this is somehow procedural, is what we're issued with.
Right, it's a procedural thing. I mean, you could sell one square foot if you wanted to of your property. It's just, being all mixed up as one makes it pretty-
And because we don't have to, I mean, the applicant has got this before us, kind of in advance of a few, you know, I's, dotted T's crossed anyway, so we've got a good sense for what we need to do. Why not?
I would caution you, though, that once you have received these, which you now have done tonight, you have a twenty-day, twenty-one-day period-
No, it, it hasn't been properly filed. It's only when it's properly filed does the twenty-one days begin. This has not been properly filed.
It's having been reviewed and, you know, I, I think they would make an argument, and they'll probably be in the office tomorrow. So, I, I would, I would get, on that application, I would ask the applicant to check the box allowing it to take longer than the twenty-one day, so that it can happen at your next regularly scheduled meeting, a month from-
So, we don't have to meet again?
I'd like to make a motion that we ask the applicants for an extension until our next meeting to get advisement from legal counsel.
That sounds good to me.
Why can't, why can't we approve, um, which, the, this parcel and the chapter parcel? We can approve that, can't we?
But it's on the same map, yeah.
So, if we're gonna do that, I'm gonna have to bring in a plan and just show that, that you're not, he's in a hurry.
It's almost like we wanna approve that and that's just not that.
Well, it's not the fact that it can't be endorsed, that she's, how, procedurally, how is that done?
And what precedent we're setting and-
Yeah, well, we are, because we're reviewing these, we shouldn't even review these to tell you the truth.
We're endorsing two different-
Now, it seems to me that we have in the past sold a piece of property to the abutter without, without having to re-do their whole property.
But what we're saying is if we had seen this person's plan that showed proper frontage, but still, this is a separate-
What I'm saying is it seems as though that we-
You don't have to have the proper frontage. I mean, we're not- Think about what-
Yeah, but the frontage doesn't matter for, for-
What kind of problem are you going to create if you endorse that plan?
Well, because Jay doesn't have ownership of it now, that's, that's my biggest-
Relative to the land.
Right.
What are we, what kind of problem are we going to create?
Then you'd have this piece of land, it's this little non-conforming thing that doesn't belong to, you know.
Well, yeah, but the owner has the right to do that. That's, the owner has an absolute right to do that.
But we don't endorse things that don't have frontage and size.
You, you, it has to be, there has to be a way to do that.
A and Rs are best, yeah.
I remember one on Whitmore Ferry Road. It was, there was frontage, and there was a parcel in the back, and they cut a little hunk off and added on to the other one. Because the other person, and it was like, could be landlocked if it wasn't that, but we endorsed that. And it's almost the, this one has frontage, so.
It's no different than if I built a garage too close to my property line.
That was what I was just wanting to-
And I need ten feet from my neighbor to comply with zoning. I'm going to do something similar to that, and the board is not gonna tell me that you can't sign that.
We did the exact same, that exact same thing on Coats Ave last year.
Well, yeah, something happened on San Gully not too long ago, too. They had to do a property swap cause somebody built a garage on the other guy's property.
And also, it doesn't apply to this, but I did the exact same thing in Montague six years ago, and it was twenty feet wide by four hundred feet long to gain access to another parcel of land.
Yeah, I mean, it's totally legal to do that. It's just procedurally how, yeah. I almost think that it has to be voted on as-
I guess one, two parcels, and then voted on again as a third parcel.
Yeah, well.
Almost like three.
Right, that's the way that I see it.
But this one's two right now we're looking at, because it's that twenty-foot strip, and then you're breaking out Helen's building lot or house lot, whatever you wanna call it.
So, I made a motion to ask the applicant for an extension till our next meeting.
I don't think we have to make a motion. I think if he say, if he agrees to it, that's all we gotta do.
Well, I think procedurally, I made a motion and-
Yeah, I don't, I think he's just gonna sign it if he agrees, that's all.
I just wanna understand what, what going to, what-
We wanna get, we wanna get legal counsel on this, cause my other thing that I just thought about here is like, like if these people, the neighbors, have a house here and all of a sudden this becomes a road, they never thought this is gonna become a road to this property, and I don't want us to get-
Yeah, I, your blood here's there. I don't think we have, nobody has the authority to do that.
If he could give him right-of-way, and it would, they'd still be effectively the same thing, so I don't think-
But it's just procedurally how we handle this as a-
Well, there's only twenty feet, so there's no setbacks for anything.
They already use S as an access point, if you're familiar with it.
Yeah, that's, but I'm just saying.
I know, I'm just saying, John, they already, it's just already basically.
I mean, I don't think there's a need to overthink that. It's just, I, I think procedurally, there's gonna be a special way that we vote on this, what I'm thinking.
So, we will put this as first up on the next meeting if you, uh, give us, actually, it'll just be an extra week, twenty-one. Yeah.
That'll be even better.
So, he just has to sign that.
And this would divide existing lot.
That's a nice place, Jay. No. No, it's, it's nice though.
It is, it is.
With what?
All right, so we'll keep all, or, well-
And, Mr. Chairman, just so to kind of ease you on that twenty-foot strip, as someone mentioned, he didn't have to divide this to sell. He could just give the guy a right-of-way, and nobody in town would know the better, and the same things would happen.
Yeah, you'd have to have a set, you'd have to have a setback, though.
No.
No.
He just has a right to-
Right-of-way.
Go across that piece of property, twenty-four.
Accident, drive my vehicle over, he could give me the right to drive my vehicle over his property if he so chooses. He just felt it would be cleaner to, to give it, to sell it to the owner.
Oh, oh, I see what you mean, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Rather than have a right-of-way over somebody's property where then that-
Then he's selling it than the, at least the-
Open up a can of worms when you get a new owner in there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right-of-way.
Over my yard, or I have a right-of-way if it's your choice.
Okay.
I mean, that's what makes the A and Rs in Massachusetts so confusing. Two years ago, we almost got rid of them, but the legislature, they had so much pressure to be willing, uh-
I don't know what, what kind of, you know, you have to be, you have to be a special permit process, I guess.
Uh, I don't think it'd be a special permit, but it'd be oversight, you know. You know, A and Rs on, when you have three, four, five lots.
Pull it the other way, and then it will, it'll, put it out and lay flat.
When's our next meeting?
What's our next meeting gonna be?
May- We gotta, we gotta set that- May seventh is town.
Jay, this isn't like holding the up-
Well, that's right, we gotta deal with town needing, uh, bill voting.
Oh, so May seventh, we can't vote? We can't?
And it's not, it'll be-
Come all being used for-
Yeah, it's not a matter of whether or not-
And you're loving it.
Do you wanna, do you wanna advance our meeting to the-
I don't know why you're not sitting here.
I know, you haven't been here in thirty years.
Where would you be meeting a planning board? Oh, I gotta be there.
Just keep them, I guess, keep them.
Do you wanna meet on, uh, when, when's, when's the annual meeting?
Monday, the seventh is the voting. The annual meeting's the thirtieth.
Okay, can, we can't meet that day.
Right.
And then the seventh is the, is the voting. So, that's Monday, so we have to do Tuesday maybe?
We could do Tuesday the eighth, or we can't do the ninth, cause that's the- Actually, we, we could meet prior to the, uh, town meeting.
Could meet the thirtieth.
And on, or the voting day. Oh, voting day we're not supposed to meet?
Voting's all day long.
Sorry.
So, how about the thirtieth prior to the town meeting? We, uh, we just meet for fifteen minutes and endorse this.
So, that's okay with me. You just gotta have a quorum, that's all.
Takes fifteen minutes, that'd be fine.
Well, I think, we're not gonna have to talk much more about it. We've done all the work, really.
Can't talk much more, Roger.
John, I'd like to make a motion that, um, we seek town council for advisement on the-
No, oh, yeah.
On vote B, how procedurally we should go through it. If at all we have to do any sort of a procedure, whether we can just say yea or nay. That's, that's my motion.
Now, but I've, I've also got a question about the date and the time. I mean, are we gonna have any other stuff we should do in May that's, that's gonna take us more than fifteen minutes to do? I mean, that's what you're doing.
Probably.
Just do it in May, but we don't have to do it.
Wanna do it the second, the second, uh, do it on the fourteenth, maybe?
The eighth.
Or the eighth?
Two to the eighth.
Well, I made a motion.
What's the eighth?
We're gonna, can we put that motion on hold until, well, part of your motion is when are we gonna take this up again?
Yes, thank you.
Cause we want them to sign the extension.
I'll second it.
Well, don't we second it and then have discussion?
I'll second it. I second it, John.
So, if it never seconds, there's no discussion.
Okay, now-
Discussion, when is the date of the next meeting?
It's either, either, we're talking either the eighth or the fourteenth, I mean, those are-
Eighth is Tuesday, fourteenth is the next month.
Monday, so whatever you-
I'm away for two and a half weeks in the, for, beginning of May, so both of those are no good for me, so.
Okay, so your, your decision doesn't mean diddly.
So, I'm diddly.
You're Bo diddly.
Monday, eighth is better for you?
Eighth.
Wanna do the eighth or the?
May works for me.
I think it looks like get at least four, five people.
How many? Everybody say May eighth's okay?
Yep.
Seven o'clock?
Yep.
Okay, May eighth.
And if by some chance town council tells you that this is not a good thing- Please let me know so that I can revise the plans, so I can move this thing forward.
I think you may ask to see it done in two votes. That's, that's my thoughts on it.
I don't know, I've never had it happen that way, but that doesn't mean that everybody else is right.
This one we sign?
Well, I mean, it's hard-
And I, I, I really, I mean, I wouldn't bring something before you or any board that I didn't think was legal and legitimate.
No, that, yeah, we hear that. We're not questioning it so much, we just wanna not get in trouble.
Yep, no, I hear you. I understand, pretty much. I understand. And that's why, that's why I asked, what, what do you think, you know, what kind of problems do you think that will, will ride up?
Now, he's gotta sign that, right? Or did he sign it already?
Yeah, so if you could initial this, I have to put until, I put three days after, it says three days after the next posted plan, so, May eighth?
May eleventh.
Eighth.
I put May eleventh on this.
Yeah.
So, that they know that you're allowing them to not take longer than the twenty-one days that they legally have to act on it.
Yeah, so you're just giving us until May eleventh. Normally, we would only have until April.
Whatever.
Twenty-third, twenty, twenty-one days from now. Um, so, sorry, so you're just initialing right here. Please initial here. And on this one, um, and so this one's complete except for the hundred and fifty. This one, actually, you should take this back and get the signatures. When, when you, you think you'll get the signatures?
Yeah, by that time, by that time, he'll, his signature will be fine.
Oh, cool.
So, that's, that's part of that. You won't even have to worry about that.
Sign the top of it.
Yeah. Right under here, like you did on this one.
Sounds like you're raising your-
All right, we will be in touch.
Jay, don't be a stranger.
Yeah, yeah, me.
I'll obviously be here next day.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andy, Jay. Mr. Chairman, who wants to take up the obligation of dealing with the lawyer on this? Do you wanna do it? Yes, cause I'll, yeah, I can do it tomorrow and the next day. So, I'm gonna talk to the town clerk about, cause I'm gonna leave these with her, and she's gonna wonder why. And then I'll talk to, um, I mean, is this an Adam Costa thing, or?
Yeah.
I guess, I mean, it should be quick for him, and so. You got, you got enough things to do. Oh, sorry, I just wanted to make sure some- No, I, I appreciate that.
Mr. Chair, I don't think we have any public comment period.
I know. And it's gonna be long, I know.
I know it.
So, usually at the beginning of our meetings, we do have a public comment, and it, I apologize, it wasn't on the agenda. But this is a time when we'd ask anybody that's present, that has any questions or concerns for, on things that are not on the agenda.
Looks like that soldier's asleep behind Eric, though, too.
And the soldier doesn't have anything to say. All right, no public comment tonight.
No public comment.
All right, so our next issue is, um, requests for comments on, uh, there's a whole folder here. Okay, here it is. So, these are zoning board things. Go into the zoning board, um,
Does this take that with you for the moment?
Well, these are requests from comments from our own town. So, our, um, our zoning board wants comments, thirty-seven South Main Street, they are seeking a variance for alteration to a pre-existing lot and a structure on a non-conforming lot. On, um, April fifth, there's gonna be a public hearing regarding the application of Blake Corey of thirty-seven South Main. Mr. Corey is seeking a variance for alterations-
Gory.
Gory. G, Gory, to a pre-existing lot and structure on a non-conforming lot located at thirty-seven South Main Street.
He wants to add a, he wants to double the size of his building.
Okay, that-
He's a welding company.
Okay, so that's, that's all, this is all the information we have. So, do we have any comment? Seeking a variance for alterations on a pre-existing lot, on a non-conforming lot.
Well, my comment would be, whatever is allowable according to our bylaws.
Well, they're seeking a variance, so I guess it's, they're seeking something that's not according to our bylaws.
Right.
I just happened to be over there today, talking to him, and they bought the property that this building is on, and now they're gonna, they wanna add on to it.
Alright, yes.
The non-conforming uses in structures portion of the bylaws, section 2250, it starts on page 179, 12. 2253D reads, "The reconstruction, extension, or structural change of a non-conforming structure in such a manner as to increase an existing non-conformity or create a new non-conformity, including the extension of an exterior wall out or along the same non-conforming distance within a required yard, shall require the issuance of a variance from the Board of Appeals." So I assume it is under that.
Right.
Requirement, that it's being, so that, so they are, so they are apparently requesting an increase to an existing non-conformity, or creating a new one.
And when is that, when is that meeting?
Now.
5th of.
Also, that goes along with that, you're probably gonna have, um, your impermeable surface question asked, if it's already.
Could potentially be.
So, that would be.
I don't know anything about the property in question.
I know, it's not a lot for us to make a.
I just happened to be there. He's gonna tear down a building that is behind where he wants to put this new building up, so, I, that's all I do know. So it's, he's not, it, to me, it looked like he was gonna take a, a storage building, tear it down.
So he's taking something down and building another thing up?
And putting another thing up, yeah. They're two detached buildings, and he's gonna tear down the, the southerly one, and put up, put in addition to double the size of his existing building. So you've gotta attend this meeting here and look, they've gotta.
Right.
There's really not enough information.
Gotta have plans there to look at.
So we have not enough information?
Not enough information.
I mean, normally, we say, go to the bylaws.
Yeah.
Right.
But obviously, this is something beyond the bylaws, and that's why.
Yeah, just, we could just say that we'll, we'll address this on site plan review, I mean, that's, and stormwater.
Would it come to site plan?
I doubt it.
He wouldn't have to?
Not more, not with a variance, I think that's what he read.
He wouldn't have to come with site plan review?
Not necessarily.
I think he would have to come.
Again, it depends on the size and nature of the.
If it's over 600 feet, and if it's under 600 feet, does it really matter?
It's over 600 square feet. I mean, what, he's gonna add on? I mean, I just happened to be, like I say, I was there today.
If it is over 600 square feet, then it, it would be likely that they would be coming for, they should be coming for site plan review then.
So, so what, if it's over, if, if the addition is?
The first threshold under 5400 site plan review is for municipal, institutional, commercial, industrial, or multi-family structure, one, a change of use, or two, construction, exterior alteration, or exterior expansion that will cumulatively add more than 600 square feet over a three-year period.
Yeah, that's to prevent them from putting 600 feet this year, 600 feet next year, so that's, that was another issue.
Or 599 each year, never tri, you know, the 600 never trigger.
Well, that all triggered because of somebody in town.
Butterfly museum, I think, wasn't it?
Museum.
Yep.
Or whatever they are, conservatory kind of.
Alright, so I said, not enough information for us to provide comment. If alterations are more than 600 square feet, or a change of use, it will require a site plan review.
Fair enough.
Then we'll have plenty of time to comment.
Because a lot of times, they won't make a vote till he's gone through the whole process with everything.
Yeah, so then another, um, on April 5th, another, uh, variance is being sought by Hugh Mayheim, Mannheim, 39 Thayer Street. Due to the structure's non-conforming use on a non-conforming lot that has been vacant for over a period of two years beyond its grace period, making the variance a requirement.
That's all it says?
That's all it says, doesn't say what.
Basically, there's an old home that's being, uh, rebuilt. It's, they're not tearing the frame down, but they've gutted the inside, and they're gonna just rebuild it. There's no additions or anything.
Going to the cemetery, uh, Stanslaw Cemetery, Born Ave, I think they refer to it as.
So, so we have no problem, or we don't wanna make a?
I would say it's no problem. Okay, you wanna read that one?
So why does that, why does that require a variance? Because I guess.
It's over.
It's over two years old.
Something about two years old. It's been vacant for a period of two years beyond its grace period.
It's been empty for a long time, John.
What, the, the building itself is vacant?
Yes, yes, the home. I can't even remember the last person.
So it must be a thing where they wanna make sure that it's, uh, not condemned or something like that?
No, because it's like your grandfather.
Right.
And they weren't using it as that, so now they wanna bring it back to being like a residential.
Oh, because it was, it's a non-conforming lot?
Right.
Okay, got it, got it.
So it sounds, sounds like it's residential use.
Yeah, because they, yeah.
That piece of property goes with, uh, Born's Market, Thayer Street.
Thayer Street Market, yeah.
It used to, it used to.
Well, I don't know if it was one lot, or it was two separate lots, but I think Hugh owns.
Right, he bought it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's separate.
So I don't know if it's one lot or two lots.
Well, it must have been two, because they never came here for subdivision, so.
Right.
Then we have another one, another, the zoning board of appeals, we'll hear, have a public hearing, April 5th, again, on the application of a max ante's of 67 Stillwater Road, South Deerfield.
Who the heck is that?
Mr. Ante's is seeking a special permit to pasture raise ten pigs for farm sale each season at the same address.
Oh.
So that's a, um, that's a special permit.
Yeah, hard to believe.
Why is that a special permit to?
Because if it's not for personal consumption, I mean, they'll look the other way if it's personal consumption. But if you wanna sell it, then you gotta be, have a special permit in Deerfield. It's just an overreaction to past events.
That's what I, yeah.
You know, and it leaves us with this.
So you're gonna be a neat farmer?
I'm gonna be, no, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be.
So let's say that, if he's a very neat and responsible farmer, then we'll, then we'll approve.
So that would be for a special permit, or for a var, no, not a variance, a special permit, right?
A special permit.
And who, who issues that?
The ZBA.
Oh, ZBA does it?
But it's a, um, it's, it's not an exempt agricultural use?
It should be.
Oh, oh, no, actually, agricultural use is exempted, but fur farm, pigery, raising of animals on a parcel of land not exempt requires a special permit, so that's what you come under it.
Hard to believe, huh? Because of history. Well, yeah, but it was just one individual.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
Twenty years ago, and we're still, we're still.
Still living that up.
Living through that.
Well, we're, we're still living through it, so it wasn't just 20 years. I was gonna say, I remember.
Well, it's ongoing. They put condos next to it. Yeah.
Not too long.
Kind of blew things out of the. But, yeah, we wrote a bylaw for an individual.
Well, if it's a special permit, I mean, the applicant, applicant has to make sure he's gonna do his diligence to.
Well, he has to, you know.
Live by the permit. Everybody loves bacon, that's all I know. Yeah, you can name more than pigs bacon. Oh, I, I've already done that.
What's better, what's better than bacon?
Nothing.
More bacon.
More bacon, yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, and, uh. Oh, oh, some of you guys have to do finance campaign reports, who, uh?
Right, I asked them to include that.
So I think you can just, um, fill it out right here and pass it along.
I thought I already did that, because I said, I said, why did I have to do that once? Uh, is this?
This is for this pa, this is.
It's fine.
This, for this one, current one.
Yeah.
You gotta do it right before, and then you gotta do another one afterwards, right?
So John, how did you reply to the max ante's one?
If you don't spend any money, you don't have to.
It said, sounds fine.
They get the file saying you didn't spend any money.
I checked with, she said it was okay. I mean, they're gonna make sure that.
Well, I'll sign it, hand it over.
You should just write coin, coin.
Coin, coin, yeah, sounds fine, if we get, uh, bacon burgers at our next.
Bacon. Where, yes, yeah, where, where is that paper? I'll sign it. Yep.
Alright. Next up, um, proposed changes in bylaws by our building inspector.
I thought we were going to have, um, him here to kinda interview on this, because I.
I spoke to him today about it, and he said that he was not aware that he was supposed to come here, and that he had a prior commitment until 7:30, but he tried to be here after.
Well, it doesn't look like it's gonna happen, so I think we should table that to.
Well, everybody get a copy of this, and I think we should be really prepared to talk about it over the next, uh.
I already have one, I've been looking at it.
Yeah, I, I'd, I'd really like to hear in 10, um, how he came about this. I, I have, I want, I have some interview questions for him.
Well, I would, if you look at this, and then Pat also reminded us that we talked about this several meetings, so, and some of the recommendations are very similar to what we had, too. I think he tried to get a little more detailed.
Is that the campaign? Oh, yeah, you need that.
But I, I would like to have him in the room.
Yeah, so that, I had passed that out to you last time, it was a copy of some zoning bylaw revisions that had been discussed by the board back in 2014. So, and they were on the same subject of the accessory bylaws. I haven't spent any time going into it in any detail. I have read the proposed changes, and I, and I think there's some great ideas that Kyle and Dick have come up with.
If this is no different than what we've already got, then I don't need to have a copy.
See, like, some of this stuff, like these shipping containers, I've never heard anything about it ever, and all of a sudden it pops up.
No, that's, that's new, I think. Yeah, I think that's new.
Yeah, and the town has empty up number of those, are they gonna do it there?
Yeah, so, I mean, I really wanna.
We should have a discussion.
We need to talk to him about it.
But I wanna be very, uh, I'm very excited that he wrote these down and brought it to us. I think that's good and proactive, and I think we should move on it in the next month or two, or so.
Or not.
Move on, it means, no, move on, it means discuss it and make action.
Yeah, thank you. Here, put that back wherever it needs to be.
Oh, okay. Alright, and now, um, Pat would like to help us, um, so, so we did motions, and there's, uh, proposed bylaw changes about the marijuana cultivation, and we need to present at the town meeting.
Right, so as we had discussed when you were doing those votes at last week's meeting, I typically help with providing you with draft reports for that presentation at town meeting. So I followed up and prepared draft reports, and it's supposed to both have the draft, and if you want to vote on the one or the other. So I have one each for the prohibition of marijuana establishments, and for the bylaw regulating marijuana establishments.
I, I guess, I'm.
This is just the report to the town meeting, to give the information about the fact that the public hearing was held, what it was in regard to.
There's not gonna be any prohibition, though. I wouldn't call it.
Your report, I don't, that may have been moved, I didn't have a chance to talk to the town administrator at any length. It is possible that it will still be on the town meeting warrant.
It will be.
Yes, I. You would need to make your report as to your actions.
Oh, it's gonna be on there?
Is this considered old business right now, John?
Yes, it's under old business.
Yeah, because I've had a lot of, well, I've had some people come to me, and they're very upset that they don't have the option to vote, um, their conscience at a referendum, and.
Sure.
I've actually heard, uh, the words recall election against two of the select board members.
Alright, so what we can do here at this planning board is prepare for the, our report at the, uh, annual town meeting when this comes up on.
Sure, but that's.
We have, we only have, whatever, whatever.
Right, I'm just saying, that's information, people will come to me.
Sir.
Neutral is not a word I would choose. Bitterly divided.
How do we get to be bitterly divided?
I know, let's.
Bitterly divided.
How about evenly divided?
No, bitterly divided.
No, it was 3-3-0.
Not neutral.
The, the board is divided, should we just say?
No, we're bitterly divided.
Oh, there's no bitterness.
So, it, I'm sorry, let's make sure we're on the same.
So he's referring to the bylaw regulating marijuana establishments, where the vote was three in favor, three against, so there's no recommendation. That's what that neutral means.
Neutral. Against.
That's right.
But that, that.
But I, but I, that's why, and I apologize, this should have been crafted on.
There's a difference.
The board as a group agreed to submit both to the town meeting. It was 5, 5, uh, 1-0.
And let the people choose.
And let the people choose, that's, that's what that was about. So there was, there was, there was uniformity in the 5-1-0 vote. It was identical for both, for both options to the select.
Correct. Correct. But there was differing votes in regard to the recommendation, which was why council had advised to do the votes separately, so as to make those distinctions clear. So I'm happy to alter this language, whatever the board feel be, better reflects.
Okay, I just, I just wanna.
But I'm confused, I'm confused.
Paul, 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 excuse me, I wanna play chair for a minute, and just, I'm not sure what we're talking about.
Don't play, just do it.
Just give me a, give me a second here.
We are on the report for the bylaw regulating marijuana establishments, and we are looking at the final vote as to the recommendation.
Sorry, uh, excuse me. Okay, they both look very similar to me. So, at the big top of it, it says, "Report to annual town meeting on April 30th, 2018, bylaw regulating marijuana establishments."
Correct.
We're not gonna look at the other one, so we're not gonna look at the other one, we're not gonna look at the other one.
Not right at this moment.
So.
Did you have another one for Roger?
Let's review this.
You got the one with draft, but not the other one?
Okay, here you go.
Okay, John, you can go back to flame.
Alright, so let's just take a second and read through this, because some people read it faster than others. So, okay, so, so we're all in agreement on what it?
Are we striking neutral?
That's the question at hand, is whether that word neutral is an appropriate characterization of the nature of the.
So the first paragraph, everybody's agree with is accurate, second paragraph, everybody agrees with is accurate? That's true?
Yes.
So then the planning board is neutral in whether to recommend approval?
I, it should be like we're a draw or something, so it doesn't look like we're neutral, because there's three against and three for. Somehow, we gotta get that across to the audience that some people were in favor and some were against. Neutral is like, we didn't have any.
We didn't have it.
Right.
Any.
So we could say the board is divided?
Well, why do you need that first sentence at all? Don't you just say, the board voted 3-3-0 on a motion to recommend, which did not provide the needed majority?
I would, I actually like that language.
Divided even.
For approval.
Because we were divided.
Yeah.
Equally.
Well, they, they, I think the town needs to know that, the people need to know that there was a lot of heated debate about this. It wasn't just, okay, let's vote, and, you know.
Well, there was a lot of discussion, and all heated, but there was a lot of.
Yeah, I, I, heated and bitter are two words I would not use to characterize our discussion.
I think neutral, divided.
Divided alone, I think maybe is a better characterization than neutral.
I think divided is a good word.
Okay, so we will replace the word neutral with the pla, the word divided.
Yep, I don't know why you need that sentence at all.
I'll just make it clear, John, I guess, and you.
Well, no, the.
I know, the 3-3 should make it clear.
Because typically, you're saying one or the other, yeah. Typically, you're in favor or not in favor.
You're saying it twice, like.
But why can't you just say the board voted 3-3-0?
Well, maybe some people won't get it.
On a motion.
Divided is very clear.
Which did not provide the needed majority for approval.
That's it.
I, I would, I would strike that whole first sentence. I, I, that's, that's kind of a, uh.
Up to the board to agree.
I'll make a motion that we insert divided where neutral is, and I guess we'll be looking for a second.
Well, let me just ask you this. Hypothetically, if I had been here, and it was 4-3, would that be overwhelmingly approval? No, it'd be just.
No, but it would have been a mo, it would have been a move to approve, it would have been approved. The recommendation would have been possible.
So I don't, you know, so I don't know why you have, you need these words, neutral, divided, anyway.
I mean, I, I, I'd rather see it struck, struck than keep neutral. Either we go divided or strike.
And how about you just, what, what John's proposing is, you just say the board, board vote, it's like a science report.
Right.
3-3-0 on a motion to recommend, which did not provide the needed majority for approval.
Yeah, I don't think we need to vote on it.
Right, then strike it, because then it becomes a fact.
I mean, this is the fact, this is, this is a report of what happened.
Just strike it, strike that word.
Would you like me to add the motion to recommend approval by town meeting of the proposed bylaw regulating marijuana establishments, comma, which did not provide the needed majority, or just leave this simple sentence?
I think just erase that, and just put the board vote.
Just erase that first sentence.
Yep.
Okay.
Because I think the more words that you get involved in stuff like that.
Board voted 3-3-0.
That will say it.
Three, four, three against, I think that's.
Let me put three in favor, three against.
Would people understand 3-3-0? Because we, we do it every, every month, but would people understand?
I put it, I put it the other language up above, so I, I think, given that the short, maybe it does make sense to say, "Three in favor, three against, zero abstaining," in the same format as above.
Yeah.
Okay. I will make that change and return that to you.
John, do you, is this something you're going to read at town meeting?
I would normally.
Because the moderator will read the motion.
Right.
Or read the article and one of us, electmen, will read the motions and stuff like that. And we ask for comment and that's when you'd get up and you'd read that.
And I'd read that the board voted three, three, one on the motion to recommend, which did not provide the needed majority for approval.
Typically, the other one, as you see, says respectfully submitted by the chair, so I'd add that here. Typically, it is the chair or his or her designated who would make that report.
So now, what, what happened with the prohibition that, is that, are we to that point yet?
No. So, okay. All right, so that's, so that's that one. And so you, so there's just no recommendation, the bylaw has no recommendation on that change in bylaw.
Right.
So.
No.
All right.
Yep.
What I'd like to address to this board is that, at town meeting, when Article 27 comes to, to prevention, it starts out with twenty, well, you don't have this one I'm reading, I'm sorry.
No.
The first chapter of 121 is gonna be twenty, 121 dash one, the prohibition, and it speaks about the prohibition throughout the town. And then the second chapter is 121 dash two, which is the enforcement, and that's where it starts to go into all of the bylaws that we agree to. I feel that there's gonna be a good number of people that are gonna say, "Well, this one article talks about prohibition and the enforcement altogether," which is gonna be very confusing. And that's where I would get up and kind of speak to the same point what you're gonna be reading, saying that, you know, the first motion that the planning board decided was to move the bylaws to the floor of the town meeting for the people to vote on. The second motion that we voted was whether or not the planning board would recommend it, and we voted not to. There wasn't a majority. The third motion was speaking to the prohibition and recommending to the select board that it be put on a warrant article. And the fourth motion was, you know, that the planning board recommended that. But because the select board chose not to put it on, the.
The warrant.
The warrant, no, not the warrant.
Ballot for the election.
It's, it's kind of a moot point, because this is, if 27 will pass, but there's not gonna be the town vote to subsidize it, and because Deerfield was a yes community, we need not only a warrant article to pass, but we need a ballot vote to pass.
I, I still think it's important to be voted on so we know.
Well, it will be, because it's.
How the people feel about it, because at that point, since the select board chose not to put it on, not including yourself in that vote, there is ways to do it with a referendum in a, in a special town meeting.
Well, just, just to make it clear, that because the prohibition is the first number in 121, but they're both together, so if that article passes, you can't necessarily then say, "Well, the people voted for prohibition because they were voting for all the bylaws."
Right.
So that's, I, I think that it should have been in two different articles, to be honest with you. But for whatever reason, it came back.
I would concur that that's gonna cause confusion. I don't know if anyone has discussed it with town council and the moderator.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's being discussed right now.
Okay. Because that is, you saw the confusion that we had amongst ourselves here, visiting it every week.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But seeing that language is in that article or whatever at the town meeting, could somebody get a block from the floor and amend it to have prohibition voted on that night?
No.
Okay.
They can't?
No, because Deerfield was a yes community.
Right.
The state law says that it has to be revoked, or the prohibition has to have two means of a vote. One is an article on the town meeting, and the second is a ballot vote.
Right, but I'm just saying, could we, that's what I'm saying, that we could get it. We could say we want it as a ballot.
Well, you can't, there's not enough time. First of all, there's posting rules, it has to be posted.
Okay, okay.
It can be done with a special town election, Roger. But do they have to be simultaneous?
But that has to happen after.
No, they do not have to be simultaneous. Why can't it just be a special election, because if they forced it to be afterwards?
With signatures, you go with a special election, it can be done.
Yeah, with a special election. But I don't know if the timing requirements would be met that way.
Well, you just have to move the election off the distance to make it, don't you?
No, that wouldn't happen. You, you still have the elections. It would have to be another special town.
That's what I mean, you'd move the.
We'd have to double check on that timeframe, so I don't have a recollection that there's a specified timeframe within which the two things have to happen, but that would certainly be something that would need to be reviewed to see if a later special ballot election or some other ballot election would suffice.
That discussion could be a moot point if the warrant can still be left open and that could be added.
I believe that warrant is closed.
The warrant is closed.
Yeah.
Friday.
But.
They had a big crowd here to close it.
I heard.
Send the paper.
So, say again that this, you have the two, is one article?
Yeah, one article, 27.
That prohibits and creates zoning?
It's now called chapter 121, and the first part about it is prohibition, 121-1. And then the second one, 121-2, is the enforcement, and it starts going through all over.
Enforcement on the prohibition?
No, no, no.
No, enforcement of.
It says enforcement and the prohibition.
But it, they just keep going. So, you know, this is, this is 123, talks about medical marijuana and the effective dates and stuff like that.
Well, the prohibition accepted medical marijuana, so that may still be related to that.
So then Article 27 is about the zoning?
Yeah.
Okay.
Did the newspaper article represent it correctly?
That's what I'm saying, it's all rolled together. In this way, it doesn't seem to make sense.
I wasn't at the meeting, so I can't comment as to whether it was appropriately represented.
Well, this is not the final.
Oh, okay. Did you, did you read the article in the paper on Saturday? Did that accurately represent what happened at that meeting?
I did not read it, but I believe it is.
Was it accurate?
I believe it was.
Of course.
Of course it was.
Of course.
He might have a slanted look on him.
Do you remember what you wrote?
Okay, so.
So this, this other report to the annual town meeting on April 30th, prohibition of marijuana establishments, so paragraph one is fine with everybody?
I, I do have a question about this, because at the open meeting, it sounded like the people thought that marijuana was gonna be banned in Deerfield. In other words, you couldn't smoke it, you couldn't buy it, you couldn't do anything in the town of Deerfield, and I don't believe that's correct. I believe it just means that.
No, it's not correct, maybe no matter what, it's still state law.
I don't believe they can ban it.
Prohibition of marijuana establishments.
Right, well, that's what I'm, but I understand what it's, I understand what it's saying, but when Carol Trapps got up here, for instance, she wanted to just ban it outright. She didn't want to see it. The other one, you know.
Well, you can't, you can't do that.
No, I know, but, okay, I'm just.
All right, so paragraph one is fine, paragraph two, and that's what we agreed to earlier in the minutes, is that it was, the first thing was to recommend it to the select board, that was five to one and zero. Then the third paragraph, can we do the same thing as we did on the other one and just say what the vote was?
Well.
The board voted.
In this case, the, the other one, we did that because it was a, a neutral vote.
It was a non-recommendation.
It was a non-recommendation.
In this case, there's actually a recommendation that was voted.
What I would recommend is just start it out by the facts. The board voted four in favor, two against, zero abstaining on the motion to recommend approval. Therefore, the board recommends approval or something, but I just, I just don't, I think that word recommends is too strong, just like you thought neutral was too strong, I guess.
Well, the vote was recommended, but if we can alter that if you prefer.
But in this case, the vote was to recommend.
That's what I'm saying, so you put that right afterwards. It says, "On a motion to recommend approval."
The board votes four to two on a motion to recommend approval.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Do like we did on the other one. Because otherwise, it's kind of subjective, it's.
Well, and it's also.
Let's stick to the facts.
Yeah.
It's all perspective, depends how you look at the issues.
I know, but. Well, it's why you want to stick to the, try to get to the facts if you're talking to the, if we're the planning board.
Well, it's my opinion that to be credible, you have to be fair, and when there's things that you don't like, you need to be fair.
Right, if we did that with a neutral, we do it with this. Yeah, I agree, that's, you have to be fair.
And I'll write out the vote using that same format throughout here as well.
In favor, yeah. So, so I would just say that it, I'm, I'm happy as the chair to present these. If there is discussion, I might speak, we can all speak our own opinions then.
And everyone has the right to speak their own personal opinion regardless of what the planning board vote was, if you so identify.
But that's why it's, it's important that people see the numbers for the votes, but then if we want to say our own thing. And I respectfully request that we don't argue too much with each other at the, at the town meeting.
I have never seen us argue as a board, ever.
No, no.
Well, there's two things that I'd like to make the board aware of, is one, the issue about the prohibition. I know that the, the select board is going to try to get the moderator to declare moot point and not have discussion on that. I also know that the select board is going to challenge the planning board's authority to be the licensing approval on town floor, so.
How is that, how is that going to proceed? I am.
It's.
That's up to the moderator to determine if that's within the scope of what is included on the warrant, whether he would allow it or not.
Yep.
But I guess if, and that's, that comes under this one, the one that we voted three to three on, so we're not.
Well, that's the prohibition, but that's.
No, no, that's the regulator.
That's the, that's the bylaw regulating it.
So we're not even recommending that.
Right.
So how can we defend that we should be the regulator?
Well.
Well, I think that was the reason we are the regulator.
Right, it's a check and balance.
Because it came from a public hearing that said, said, "We want, we want the planning board to do it because we feel you have a better grasp on the community being mixed."
Well, I think, I think we agreed that site plan.
We had partial view on.
That's right.
Well, also that, no, but we, we look at site plan reviews and that's what this would require, basically.
It's more than two people.
And we've done it, it's an elected board, seven people.
Select board's three people. All it takes is two.
Two, yeah.
To, you know, so having that third person on a select board is pretty much a moot point these days, so this way it gets a better collective of the townspeople. I think we have a very diverse board with their thought processes and the way they feel about things, and I, I think the wisdom of the crowd prevails with this board versus the select board.
And that was, that was the comment that was made by a towns person at one of our meetings when we decided to, to do it.
Well, I just want you all to be aware of that, so.
Excellent. All right, so we're ready for that? So these.
I'll do these right away for you and get them back to you. And I also have the sign-in sheet from that public hearing, and I'll transmit that back at the same time, and I'll, I'll copy Barbara on it, just so she has that already in her files, so when she has to submit to the AG's office.
Excellent, I get it, I have something else here.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you, Pat.
Thank you, Pat, have a safe ride.
I got a, something was left in our box that said, "Someone managed to lose the original signatures on a site plan review decision that we made back in August, so we need to re-sign this." And I guess it's just the originals, there's a copy of it here, so I'm happy to.
What was the site plan?
This was RV repair, restoration and sales, two feathers.
Two feathers.
So there was me, whose signature is that?
It's mine.
Vice chair, that's you. Is that Max?
Max.
And Roger.
So the four of us sign it again. Because they, even though they had a copy, they needed one.
They would need it in order, so you can show that to.
Yep.
Anything else? Oh, mail.
Sorry, John.
I should have been looking at the mail.
I'm the dude that. I'm trying to sign it in the same location, guys.
I mean, we did the important things that want in our opinion, but. Thank you, we have a, what do you call it? Quorum, a full board tonight. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Sorry I missed the next one, I haven't missed many, but the next one.
It's two out of three, the one in May 8th, I'm gonna be out of.
Oh, okay.
Going to Uganda.
Uganda.
Going to Uganda, going back home.
Going back, yes.
Going back home.
Bring the blanket. John, here you go, here's the.
So you can tell who read the book?
Yes.
Excellent, thanks. Never mind.
Oh, yeah, that, you may want to read aloud, that, that pertains to us.
You can read that.
It says, "You may be aware Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, SDP, Ministers Massachusetts Public Waterfront Act, commonly referred to as Chapter 91." What am I, what am I reading? Protects and promotes. It's just licensing review, no? General licensing review protects, promotes public interest in waterways, protects public health, safety and general welfare as it may be affected by projects in Thailand's great ponds, non-tidal rivers and streams, ensures that public has right to fish, foul, navigate, legal rights of adjacent waterfront property owners. Do I keep reading?
I've had enough.
What is it?
Thank you.
There's no action, no, it's just point of information, I think, about waterways.
No, it's just telling the responsibilities of the planning board.
Yes.
When it, when it.
GLC, which is a general licensing certificate.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so here's Whately, Town of, a public hearing on a 133 KW ground-mounted solar array. So I mean, just, there's, you know, solar is a thing, not a hot topic, but a thing, on the Manheim Farm. Well, so we had that name come in here, so.
He's moving.
He's got a whole thing going.
Isn't that some Whately, John?
Yes.
This is Town of Whately, yeah.
Well, whereabouts in Whately?
Uh, where in Whately? It is located. 311 River Road, 311 River Road.
I know he owns land there, but he might own land someplace else also.
Uh, this, actually, this was a letter sent to us, so I'll read it aloud. Deerfield Select Board, Planning Board, Zoning Board, Deerfield Inspections Board. Ladies and gentlemen, in close, you will find a letter that we have sent to Chief of Police here in Deerfield regarding our declining situation at 711, 707 Greenfield Road, Route 5 and 10. We wanted you to be aware of what is happening at our location, as we've stated to the chief that we believe our situation has escalated beyond a simple border altercation. We pursue, we have pursued legal counsel by our lawyer, the Honorable Jack Curtis from Greenfield. He has explained that these types of situation could linger for years. We have reached out to Chief of Police, we are now reaching out to all of you for help to resolve our situation. It is dangerous from a traffic safety standpoint, and our clientele are now being verbally confronted by an angry, aggressive Mr. Atherton. Help, please. Mr. Atherton submitted blueprints on the site plans at Town of Deerfield for their approval today. His site does not look anything like his approved blueprints and site plans. Is there a forum, a meeting at Council Board that we can appeal to, to have Mr. Atherton's permits reviewed, or at least have his site resemble his initial designs? In all seriousness, all we want in the long run is a safe access and egress from our business for us, our clients, and Mr. Atherton's clients. I'm not gonna read the, that, that was the prelude to the letter, I, I don't think that we need to read the, I don't know who Mr. Atherton is.
Well, just the famous words that you.
Two feathers.
The famous words you once uttered, so yesterday. It's been, it's been dealt with last week ago.
Well, I felt it prudent if somebody sends a letter that.
The building inspector went up and they dealt with that, so.
That's what I, I mean, that's who's.
Does the, does the building inspector have anything to say? In other words, I, I thought there was supposed to be a fence put up all in front to demarcate the building.
There was, there was, there was an issue about fence and locations and.
Well, that's on the, on the north side of his property, the fence was the problem. But wasn't there supposed to be one in front as well?
Well, I, I think the building inspector is the enforcement agent for our site plans and things. If he finds that something needs to come back to us, I trust he'll bring it back to us.
So.
That should be our reaction.
Christopher Garland and Arthur Brewer's issue has been resolved by the sounds of it, well, that's a good thing.
All right.
Okay, good.
Nice.
Town of Whately, nothing. Conway's voting to do a temporary moratorium.
We already got that in a previous meeting. That may be an old one, John, but we got that a couple of months ago.
Yeah, February 23rd, I don't think we need to go any further. Yeah, it's done.
All right, anything else?
Motion to adjourn? I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Eight fifty, all of the favor?
This was in there, I'm gonna take that with me if you don't mind.
Big way system, go for it. Make bike lanes.
Eight fifty.
Eight fifty, adjourn.
Aye.
Excellent, aye, those in favor.
Thank you.
Seven zero zero.